Hafedain, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here at the Guam Legislature on this 25th day of July. This public hearing is conducted by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure. It's court order, and the time now is 8:30 a.m. Today's date is Friday, July 25, 2025. Notice of this hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on July 17, 2025, with a second notice public provided on July 23, 2025. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website and the government of Guam Public Notice Portals. This morning, the committee will hear testimony on Bill Number 143-38COR, an act to add a new subsection 5117.2 to Chapter 5, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to granting the Director of Public Works Procurement Authority for small purchases. A bill that I introduced along with co-sponsor Senator Chris Duñez. Also, we will be hearing Bill Number 160-38COR, an act to add a new Article 8 to Chapter 66, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to adopting the International Property Management Code for certain properties on each zones, hotel, lots. I also introduce this bill along with co-sponsors Senator Chris Duñez, Jesse Luhon, Sabrina Salas, Metanani, Joe S. Augustine, Tina Munya, Barnes, and Shelley Calvo. I would like now, I'd like to now welcome my colleagues. Join us here today to my right is Senator Sean Gomitata, and to my left is Senator Chris Barnett. Good morning, senators, and thank you for being here. Before we begin, I'd like to go over the general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from a hearing of any member of the legislature in Guam who fails to observe property quorum pursuant to the 38 Guam Legislature's standing rules. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in your removal. We will now proceed with the hearing on testimony on Bill Number 143-38COR. I would like to go ahead and call to the table the representatives from the Department of Public Works, and also we have on Zoom Director Vince Ariola, who is joining us online. Bill Number 143-38COR grants small purchase authority to DPW via its director. DPW is the existing procurement authority for all construction contracts. This small purchase authority will allow the Department of Public Works the authority to procure supplies and services under $25,000, such as auto and heavy equipment, parts and supplies, motor oils and lubricants, and office supplies. Lately, DPW has expressed concern over delays in getting open purchase orders for these items. This additional procurement authority will help make their operations more efficient. Since DPW is already the procurement authority for construction contracts, its personnel are required to complete all required procurement training modules, so this transaction, this transition should be seamless. And we'll go ahead and get the testimonies from the director and also the deputy director. Would you like to go, or Director Ariola will present first?
I'll read the written testimony for DPW, and then the director will answer any question.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ebanis. Go ahead and state your name for the record and...
Linda J. Ebanis, Deputy Director of Public Works.
You can proceed with your testimony, ma'am. Thank you.
Subject is testimony in support of Bill Number 143-38. Dear Senator Ada, Senator Drainus, and honorable members of the 38 Guam Legislature. Hafedain, thank you for the opportunity to testify in the support of Bill Number 143-38, which proposed to grant the Department of Public Works, DPW, delegate procurement authority for goods and services. We commend the intent of Bill 143-38 as a necessary first step, but respectfully urge the legislature to go further by extending full procurement autonomy to DPW beyond small purchases. As Guam leads agency for public infrastructure and roadway safety, DPW's ability to fulfill its mission is constrained by persistent procurement delays. Whether clearing debris after a typhoon, deploying heavy equipment for emergency road repairs, or responding to urgent service requests, our ability to act only as strong as our ability to procure. And right now, the process is broken. These delays are not hypothetical. They are daily operational failures with real-world consequences. In fiscal year 2025 alone, our Highway Maintenance Construction and Transportation Maintenance Division initiate 97 procurement transactions. As of July 23, 2025, 38 requisitions remain pending, many for more than 90 days. Among these are critical items such as abandoned vehicle removal, blanket purchase agreements for recurring maintenance needs, replacement parts of dump truck, excavators, roller, and traffic signals, traffic systems, supply components for vehicles and school bus safety, heavy equipment rental, sign fabrication, shop tools and maintenance machinery, herbicide for roadside vegetation control, onsite evaluation services for test stations. These are not wish list items. They are mission-critical items that are essential to road safety, storm response, and basic public service delivery. Delays often stem from expired quotes, accounts adjustment on assigned buyers, or prolonged waiting for the acting chief procurement officer's review and signatures. While specific challenge varies across all DPW's division, the impacts are consistent. Lengthy purchase orders delay even after all requirements are met, recently lower BPA threshold from $24,999 to $14,999, creating unnecessary bottlenecks. The GFMI system, discrepancy and misrepresenting funds balance once POs are entered, poor communication between GSA buyers and DPW end users, especially with alternate vendors. Vendors discovering POs before we do due to unforward acknowledgements, prolonged delays between PO readiness and final approval. These are not minor issues. Their delayed fieldwork, slow repairs jeopardize federal funding and erode public trust. DPW is ready and willing to maintain transparency, provide external reporting, and uphold strict internal controls. But we need the authority to act so we can respond with the same urgency the public expects from us. Construction procurement is not generally, is not general purchasing. It's technical, compliance-driven, and time-sensitive. DPW staff are licensed engineers, planners, and field supervisors with the expertise to understand environmental requirements, product specification, and federal procurement regulation. GSA personnel through not fault of their own are not trained in these areas. The, there, this disconnect is not just procedure. It's structural, and it's costing the government time, money, and credibility. While we support the intent of Bill 143-38 to delegate small purchase authority to DPW, we respectfully urge the legislature to take more decisive steps to amend the bill to grant DPW full procurement authority for construction-related goods and services. Small purchase delegation is not enough when we're responsible for emergency road repairs, federal project delivery, and round-the-clock public safety. We are not asking for unchecked power. We are asking for the operational tool to meet the mandates you entrust us. DPW already has enforced strict internal controls, multi-tier approvals, audit trail, and compliance review. We are committed to submit quarterly procurement reports to DOA, BBMR, and the legislature. And we will continue to comply with all applicable procurement laws and federal guidance. The consequences are limited. Procurement are not theoretical. When procurement stalls, our mission stalls. Equipment goes unused, crews are pulled off the field, roads go unrepaired, response times are slow. There are daily operational breakdowns that stem from a system that no longer matches the speed or complexity of the modern public infrastructure work. This isn't about convenience, it's about capacity. It's about equipping Guam's construction experts with authority to do the job right the first time. As the delay faces by both Highway Maintenance and Transportation Maintenance Division show, even routine maintenance becomes a sporadic struggle without procurement authority. DPW is prepared to manage the authority with transparency, urgency, and integrity. Sidus Massey, for your time and for your continued support for a strong, more responsive government.
Thank you, Deputy Director Ebanis, for your testimony on behalf of the Department of Public Works. And I know we have Director Vince Ariola on Zoom. I'd like to also introduce and welcome my colleagues, the vice chair of my committee, Senator Chris Duñez, and also Senator Teletide, Teint. Thank you for being here this morning, ma'am. I'll go ahead and open up the panel to my colleagues to ask any questions they may have of yourself or of Director Ariola. And that way, we can go ahead and conclude our public hearing. I'll start off with the vice chair for the committee, Senator Chris Duñez. Sir?
Sidus Massey, Vice Speaker and Chairman of the committee. Thank you, Ms. Ebanis, for your testimony. And thank you for being here on Zoom, Mr. Ariola. I guess, to start with, I'm trying to recollect your requesting to go further and go for full authority. Did DPW have it at one time?
Many, many years ago. I think when I started at GPW, 1984, I think we had it on 1990. And we had full procurement authority in DPW for goods and services.
Okay. You recollect the reason why? It must have been by public law that it was removed, or executive order?
I believe so. And then, of course, change of administration also. And then, what I understood was they revoked the delegation of authority.
Okay. Well, you know, I certainly, I think you make a compelling case. And I know our chairman, you know, many of the committees, all the committees really have been really using this markup process to refine bills and to ensure that as we go forward, you know, we, this is, it looks like at this point, it could be a starting point. I don't know where we arrive at some point, but I think you make a compelling case, particularly in times when you have to respond. I think your rapid roadway repair and different things that you mentioned are definitely appropriate. So I will work with the chairman. I don't really have any questions. Looks like you absolutely support this bill, but are asking for it to go further. And so I think that the committee can vet that very well. I think maybe as we go into the markup, and Vince, if you have any comments, as we go into the markup, maybe you can bring some additional information to the committee on the history, and then kind of maybe work more towards making your case other than your testimony today. Any thoughts, Vince?
Yes. Thank you very much, Senator, and good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Yes, we, you know, we absolutely have been looking forward to this, to this hearing and looking, actually looking forward to receiving some form of procurement authority. One of the things I did want to mention, you know, just last month, there was a procurement summit. I believe it was put together by the Guam Chamber of Commerce. And there are, you know, all the GovGuam agencies were there. And not surprisingly, the first group of agencies to do presentations were the autonomous agencies, GPA, Guam Waterworks. I believe, I believe UOG was there, and even GCC were there. And not surprisingly, they didn't have any issues with their operations because they have full procurement authority. And when you have that, your operations are smooth. They actually achieve their mission, as Linda stated in our testimony. They spend the money that they make. They spend the money that's appropriated to them, and services are rendered. I like to think that we are so much similar to, especially GPA and GWA. We are, we are not an administrative agency. We are a logistical, we are a construction, we are a, we are a hands-on type of agency that has a mission to provide a number of services, as Linda mentioned, for the public. And we really can't do that with our, with our hands being tied. And if, again, if I go back to the procurement summit, it was, I hate to say it, but I'll use the word, it was almost comical. I almost said, why are these guys here? Because nobody asked questions of them. There weren't any issues. Why? Because they have a smooth sailing ship when it comes to procurement. And so, you know, by the time we got up there, and, you know, we had all kinds of other issues that we had to discuss. But, you know, I really ask that the senators take a look at this and see the critical position that we're in. And it's really important to DPW. And then, one final note that I would like to mention also is, you senators, you appropriate a budget to us every year. There is nothing worse, and I've said this so many times, there's nothing worse than coming back to a budget hearing and trying to explain lapses that we have. Lapses because it takes time to hire people. Lapses because it takes time to spend money for goods and services. I am not a manager that's fond of lapses. And I've always said this publicly. I, it's, it's, it's my job to spend correctly and accurately and accounting-wise, public funds, to make sure our mission gets achieved. And if I can't do that, and at the end of the year, if I have $2 or $3 million, I didn't do my job. We didn't do our job because somewhere in there, we should have spent that, the lapses, and we could have spent the lapses. It's no different, senators, than when we have these federal grants, and we have to send the funds back to the federal government because we didn't spend it. Whether it's, whether it's our fault or through operational issues, or in this case, I would have to hang my hat on the lack of procurement authority and the lack of an efficient procurement system. So I'll leave it at that, Senator. And, you know, we can certainly have more discussions. And I'd be able to, I'd be more than happy to answer myself and Linda any other questions you folks may have.
Yeah, Director Ariola, I concur that, I agree. You are a utility to the utilities, really, because they all rely on you and your ability to really set up for the conditions when you're talking about rights of way, when you're talking about issues associated with, you know, all of the public easements, really. So I think this is ripe for discussion. My final question, Director Ariola, is, is this similar? Like how efficient you are when you use your IDIQ capabilities and the like for engineering services and other things that kind of facilitate your work going forward?
Correct. Yes, yes, sir. The only problem with IDIQ, or say, you know, a lot of folks will say, well, Vince, why don't you just use open purchase orders at all the businesses? That's fine to have open purchase orders, but that encumbers our money. And we might have an open purchase order at a certain business of, let's call it $10,000. And at the end of the year, maybe I spend, you know, only $2,000 there. You know, we'd have to scramble and take the money out of that toward the end of the year and use it somewhere else. There are, there are mission-critical purchases that we have to do on the spot that are outside the scope and outside the logistics of having an open purchase order at certain vendors.
Thanks a lot, Director Ariola and Ms. Ebanis. Mr. Chairman, I think really this kind of self-explanatory now where we go forward is, I look forward to the markup meetings and meeting with DPW and other teams to kind of see if we can, if not to full authority, see what the steps are, or maybe that's where we go. But thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duñez, for your comments and for your questions for the department. Senator Gomitata, you have any questions or comments, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone. Good morning, Linda, and good morning to Vince this morning. I only have a few questions, and if I can, I just wanted to ask, and it seemed just, we were just here talking about your budget, so some of this is not, is not new. And so I do appreciate being here again. And just as you guys mentioned, this is pretty pressing. So let me just ask, recognizing that based on a, I had just had a chance of cursory review of the legislature's messages and communications for the first six months of this particular 38th Guam Legislature and the entirety of the 37th Guam Legislature, that DPW did not submit a small purchase report pursuant to 5GCA Section 5213? Now, for the record, I know you mentioned it just a few minutes ago, but for the record, what information is available confirming whether DPW engaged in small purchases during the last two and a half years? And what challenges, if any, has the department faced under the current small purchase procurement arrangement with the General Services Agency?
So our reports that we submit to the legislature and the OPA are all based on our construction purchase orders, our payments, vouchers, that have not executed appeal, right? Like utilities and stuff. But with the reporting of the small purchase goods and service, I believe it should come from General Service Agency because they're the ones that execute those purchase orders. What we do on a blanket purchase order that Vince had mentioned is that we provide all the data that we expend on that purchase order to GSA, because that's a compliance, right? So they would have that procurement plan data of what DPW has spent for that particular purchase order, like plumbing, electrical, materials and supplies. That's a compliance from GSA.
Okay. And if applicable, and this is my last question, acknowledging that the findings and recommendations that were contained in OPA Report Number 25-08, it was issued earlier this month, which reviewed UOG's credit card purchases. To what extent is DPW considering perhaps maybe the use of credit cards for small purchases if Bill 143 is approved as drafted? And what general policies has the department considered to help ensure that procurement records are complete with the necessary price quotations, that procurements are not artificially divided so as to constitute a small purchase, and that procurements are based on funding availability?
Okay. So in my tenure with DPW, we never had credit cards, right? And so what we do have is petty cash. And so petty cash is based on emergency requirements. But of course, you still have to follow the procurement rules. Get three quotations, make sure that it's readily available, it's signed, an invoice, and reimburse properly with, it's called a Form 9, an internal documentation to track and to support and approve that this item is in dire need for the department, like a fan belt that needs to, you know, replace. So it goes through all the proper channels. So we have that mechanism in place.
Senator, if I may, with regard to credit cards, at this point in time, I am certainly not a fan of credit cards for, in use for Public Works yet. You know, I, even as far back as my tenure when I was at GTA, and GTA was autonomous, I just was not a fan of credit cards because we just, we just didn't have the system yet in place. And even if we do have a system, as some other agency, some other agencies have, there are still some issues with regard to the use of government credit cards. So at this point in time, that's probably, the use of a government credit card is probably the last thing on my mind. I would, I would stick to some form of a, the current system right now in terms of procurement for goods and services, and we'll leave it at that.
All right. Thanks, Vince. And, Mr. Chair, why you asked that question? It's 2025, and when we think about policies that are to kind of move and modernize the government, things that could perhaps help, I think that those, you know, it's worth the shot. I was part of those discussions back in 2003 when we talked about credit cards, and it's been already 20 years removed. We have a more mature government. We have, obviously, the Office of the Public Auditor creeps into all of our records quite regularly. And I think that the safeguards that are in place by this branch and the rules and policies that are made by our executive branch is still maybe worth a consideration. But anyhow, I ask that in fairness. But thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time this morning.
Thank you, Senator Gomitata, for that. And I think that perhaps, you know, eventually, when the department feels that it can be handled in a very secured way, that they can move forward with their policies and procedures.
Oh, no, absolutely. That's why I appreciate the candor of Vince. Thanks again, Vince.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony and questions. Senator Barnett, you're recognized, sir?
Manasidu, Mr. Chair, Beba Betness to the people of Guam. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. Good morning, Ms. Linda. Happy Friday. So, yeah, on its face, I tend to support the bill because it seems like it's chipping away at some of the backlog that we have relative to procurement. And as last night, I was kind of reviewing this issue. You know, because we've done, there's a bill, I believe, to give the mayor's council maybe full procurement authority. And so with the small purchase granting, which I support, I'm not sure about giving you guys the full procurement authority just yet. But maybe we grant you the small purchase and then kind of have a look see a little bit down the road. But Bill reads in the B section that you shall ensure that your procurement officials undergo and successfully complete procurement training pursuant to 5GCA. So does the Department of Public Works currently have staff on board who have completed their procurement training? Or is this something that you're going to have to go out and recruit for?
No, we have staff that had taken the procurement modules, and then we're doing some refresher courses. And then we have federal highway. They have their procurement modules also with the FAR.
Okay. So the small purchase limit, at least my look is $24,999. So what type of purchases would Department of Public Works be able to make with this, the small purchase procurement authority?
Well, we're looking at, and it's basic, it's for parts for our heavy equipment, our traffic signals. You know, when the light goes out, we have to go get a red light, green light, electrical items. So those are the stuff that we're looking at, traffic, paint. There's various operational needs that we need out there, so.
We always hear about the backlog of procurement. So do you currently have small purchases that are over at GSA? And do you have any detail on how long you've been waiting on those?
Well, the items that I mentioned are critical items that have been with GSA for 90 days. We have components for our excavators, our side cutters. We have rollers that are parts that are needed. And so the waiting time just to execute the purchase order, it's a delay. And then also, when they execute the purchase order, there's another delay because we have to wait 90 to 120 days for the parts to come in. And then if we pay air freight, that's another cost that we have to look at. So those are the adjustments that we make. And by the time we get that, our equipment has been sitting for three to six months. I'm just waiting for a simple starter.
What about, you know, previous hearings? We've talked about the bus stops and the barricades. Are these also items that you'd be able to procure with this authority?
Yes, we have. And like we mentioned on the oversight, we're waiting for plywood, right? And so a lot of them don't have it. So we're still waiting for that delivery. There's a delay also on the delivery.
Okay. Well, thank you for your testimony. And, you know, it seems pretty cut and dry. It's a one-pager. I know there's a, I think there's another measure before the body that would raise the small purchase limit. So, but I think that's a conversation for another time. And then, you know, I'm not sure if it's going to require a new bill, Mr. Chair, in the markup. But, you know, I think we should hear from GSA relative to the issue of granting you the full procurement authority just to get their two cents on it. So Sidus Massey, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak, and have a great Friday, everyone. Sidus Massey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnett, for that. I think you're absolutely right that perhaps, you know, we need to keep looking and expanding and giving them that authority as they, you know, they're helping our community.
I thought I was having last night, Mr. Chair, that in some ways, it seems like we're legislating our way out of some of the delays that are created, also with the new financial management system. So I support it. You know, procurement's such a big conversation. You know, procurement's such a big conversation lately. Any way we can prudently chip away at, at some of the issues, I think I, I tend to support. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Senator Barnett. Senator Tidel Tidigui, you're recognized, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to my colleagues. You know, it's ironic that we're coming up with this bill today because I'm taking the procurement modules. I'm, I'm starting on Module One. I think we have our test next week, Monday, you know, just out of trying to understand the whole procurement process. It's very, you know, difficult sometimes to understand it. I mean, it's different from the federal. I, I always say that we should have actually just followed the federal guidelines for procurement. Anyways, in my class, you know, that I've been taking for the last two weeks, you know, they talk clearly about integrity, transparency, accountability, and most especially financially, responsibility. That was one of the things that, and we're going to be tested on that on Monday. So I'm practicing here today. But, you know, I, I do reach out to certain people that, that do teach procurement. And one of the concerns was that the reason why procurement was, you know, given out first to agencies was because of the shortage of employees at GSA to go through this process. And then it was taken away from the agencies because there were a lack of, of individuals to oversee procurement correctly. There is a lot of room for mistakes, but one of the biggest issues is the domino effect that this, you know, bill may cause, and that's everybody else coming, all these other agencies coming here asking for the same thing. And, you know, we, we give one, we got to give them all. But the problem is, is that even up to this time, even though we put a law out there that requires people handling procurement to take the modules, Module 1, 2, 3 to 4, they're not doing it. And that's a big issue that I have a concern with. You know, I'm, I'm glad the legislation requires it, that says shall, not may, but shall, take these modules. Even your acting procurement, who is the, I think it's, the acting chief procurement officer is Kanata, right? Or Kidigwa, right now, right? Kidigwa is your acting?
She's the acting chief procurement officer for GSA under the Organization of Department of Administration.
Okay. I think, Mr. Chair, if we can, also seek out the testimony of, of the acting chief procurement officer at GSA. To get the testimony from there, I think is very critical. If we don't have their testimony to see why they're not even offering, asking us to give the small procurement, I mean, a, a small procurement authority for the agencies and hear their side of the story, I think we, we may be, you know, well, we find that balance, you know what I'm saying? Yeah.
Absolutely. And Senator Tidigui, we did make multiple requests to, for DOA to testify, including them, offering them to, to log on on Zoom, and we were not able to be successful in that. Even meetings with Director Ed Byrne and no response.
I think we should, maybe if we can, Mr. Chair and I will, because I'm in contact with them, going to class and learning things from that, that I'll, I'll reach out to GSA, personally, just to GSA, that for the acting procurement officer to provide testimony as to why. I know the conversation happened. I know my, my instructor, you know, is always on top of all these bills, and then she teaches this, everybody. There was like 50 people in my class right now taking this course. And I, I think it's really important, from what I've learned, that there's checks and balances put in place. There's a lot of room for abuse, and I think that's why I just want to be cautious. I'm, I'm worried too about the domino effect of, you know, every agency coming here now asking for the same authorization. One of the questions I have is, you know, if, if you're such a proponent of this, I mean, I'm talking about on a small scale. I don't think I'm going to give you, you know, I don't, I will not support the full, you know, procurement authorization above small purchases. That, that's a no-no. I mean, from what I learned in my class, no. And by the way, how many in your agency have taken the, all four modules?
I believe there's four, and we're doing refresher courses. I believe they're already set up for the August, I believe, but I can confirm and get back to you. We have a bunch of staff that has taken procurement one and two, and then we have a complete, I think there's three or four that had taken all procurement modules.
Three or four? And then they're currently working in your department right now and handling procurement?
They're handling on their division side, and yes, they're working in the department.
So you do have four certified?
Correct.
Okay. None of them leaving or anything like that, right? Okay.
I hope not.
That's a problem too, you know, as soon as you train them, then they go off. And I mean, believe me, the military is finding these people who've taken these trainings, you know, and move forward. So, yeah, I think we, we need to follow up, you know, with your agency to make sure those modules are in place because we're finding out that a lot of people have taken Module One and not moved forward at all. So other than that, what are the safeguards that you, you have in place to prevent misuse of the procurement authority for these small purchases?
So as you know, we have the construction full-blown procurement authority. We have mechanism and internal controls are in place, so.
What are they?
We have, for instance, construction. Of course, we do every other agency's. We have work requests, we have bids submitted, we have market research, we have determination of needs, we, our constant communication with the Attorney General for review of our contracts, anything over 500,000 has to go on to them for reviews. Our bids are openly, publicly, they're on our websites, our, our bid tablations are transparent. All of these mechanisms, the contracts go to DOA for registration, they, they all too have their internal policies and reviews. So all the, the systems are checked, the procedures are implemented, and there's control on any procurement activity for DPW.
So you should have an SOP and best practices in place? Do you actually have that on your website?
I believe we don't have it on our website, but I can confirm.
Okay. Do you have best practices, SOPs in place?
Yes, we do with our Federal Highway and we do with our, our capital improvement project.
In procurement, I'm talking about?
Yes. Procurement is all construction.
But yet it's not on your website?
I have to confirm. Like I said, our websites, and it's not dependable, Senator, so I would have to go back and check.
What is not dependable?
Our websites are not dependable.
Oh, that's sad. Because if we're talking about transparency, that's the first thing that you can prove that you're, you're being transparent, transparent is having a website that's constantly online. Anybody can go to the, you know, the website and look at any information they need. It's not just on a, you know, transparent site, but it's providing the services to the people of Guam. You know, I get calls many times from individuals that are not getting assisted by DPW. And for me, you know, I don't work there at them where I just, you know, say, go to their website, and they should have all that information for them. So, yeah, trans, your website should always be up and running.
Yes. Our federal part, Transportation System website is on. What you're asking, I would have to confirm the best practice on procurement.
Okay. Yeah, please make sure that's on there too. Your SOPs should also be on there as well, so people understand the process and, and can confer to that. But most especially, that document should also be given to GSA as well. All your SOPs and best practices should be filed with GSA so they see your, if there's any changes or, or need of, you know, readjusting those SOPs. So other than that, you know, I'm, I'm very cautious, probably because I'm going to class and seeing all the, all the issues that, that come about and the, the total need of these classes for anybody in the government of Guam. And not just people handling procurement, but especially us as senators. I know Senator Perez has done all four modules, and she's our go-to person in session hall when we talk about procurement because it is quite extensive and very difficult to understand sometimes. You know, there's so many parts to it. So I appreciate the opportunity to bring that up and look forward to seeing those SOPs and best practices. And I will contact Ms. Kanaptet too as well, to try and get some information as well. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tidigui. And I think that, you know, Deputy Director Manis and Director Ariola, I think you guys hit it on the, hit the nail on the head where not only do you guys have the, your, your team has the procurement modules, but you continually do refresher courses. And probably that's something that we may need to look at and implement in the entire government of Guam where just because you've taken the courses two years ago, that you may need to take a refresher course so that you're always updated. And I think you guys have done and taken a proactive approach, and I commend you guys for that, and we continue to look, work for, work with you so we can move forward. But thank you for your testimony this morning. And Director Ariola, thank you for coming online and joining us for this public hearing. There will be no further questions or comments on Bill Number 143-38. This concludes the hearing, and we thank you again for being here and have a wonderful day. Stay dry because I know it's a little bit wet out there. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Director Ariola.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and go on to the next bill. The bill is Number 160-38COR, and this is an act to add a new Article 8 to Chapter 66, Title 21 Guam Code annotated. And this is the relative to adopting the International Property Management Code for certain properties on hotels, own lots. For those of you who will be testifying, please come up to the table, and we'll go ahead and start this hearing on Bill 160-38. Good morning, everyone, again. And I'm sure that everyone on the island can point out at least two or three hotel properties that have become so dilapidated that demolition is likely the only option to restore the beauty of Tumon. And I, it's my hope that Bill 160-38COR will ensure that those who build hotels also maintain the appearance of the structures and related facilities. And this may include water blasting mold from exterior walls, repainting periodically, you know, the landscaping, the green space. And although DPW will be responsible for creating the IPMC for Guam, GBB, whose membership consists of most of Guam's tourism-related businesses, will be responsible for the creation of the code and the timelines and how and whom the code will apply. And I, I'd like to thank Vice President Perez for being here from the Guam Visitors Bureau, and Mr. Dan Swaveley for being here as well to testify on this bill. So if you can just go ahead and introduce yourselves, and between the two of you, who would like to go first, and we'll go ahead and start. Okay, thank you. Mr. Perez, you're recognized, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Started already. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Jerry Perez, VP for the Guam Visitors Bureau. I'm actually here on behalf of our president and CEO, Regine, who's off island, and I'm here to enter into the record and to read into the record her statement of support for, for the bill. Guam's economy depends on tourism in many cases. Every flight that lands, every room that is booked, and every meal that is shared on our island creates jobs, supports families, and brings revenue into our island. Our people work very hard to offer a very warm hospitality and memorable experience on Guam, but to be successful, we need to ensure that the physical environment matches the spirit of our people. Tumon is the center stage of our tourism industry and the destination perception that is viewed through the prism of most visitors. Unfortunately, some of these areas in our Tumon district have become marked by disrepair and neglect, and visitors notice when a building is abandoned or when a lot is overgrown. They also notice when a property is well-maintained, well-lit, and inviting. As we continue to rebuild our tourism industry and recover from the pandemic, first impressions matter and do so in a long-lasting way. Bill 16038 gives the Guam Visitors Bureau, in coordination with the Department of Public Works, the ability to request the adoption of internationally recognized maintenance standards for hotel zone properties. These standards help ensure that buildings, parking areas, and green spaces meet basic expectations, not only for safety, but for upkeep and aesthetic value. This legislation allows us to respond with care and intention when issues arise, using a clear administrative process. It helps us preserve the value of our tourism district and maintain the high standards that both our residents and visitors deserve. Because it's not just one thing to put into law certain requirements, it's also a way of having an administrative process to execute policy. I would also like to add that many jurisdictions have adopted similar laws to maintain the appearance and safety of their tourism and commercial districts. Cities such as Seattle, Olympia, Austin have adopted International Property Maintenance Code or equivalent local laws to improve property upkeep and enhance visitor experiences. Having a strong visitor experience benefits everyone because it supports our workers, strengthens our economy, and encourages repeat travel and positive word of mouth. It also sends a message that we are serious about protecting the beauty and dignity of our island. Recognizing this, I respectfully ask that the legislature consider amending the bill's effective date to take effect within 90 days after enactment rather than one year. The condition that is, that the bill seeks to address is already in existence and visible in our tourism districts today. A shorter timeline would expedite and allow us to begin the necessary work of improving our tourism environment with greater urgency and impact. To close, I would like to extend a very dunkelunus sidos masi to the main sponsor and co-sponsors of the bill, particularly Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Jess Lohon, Senator Sabrina Salas, Senator Joe Sanoggin, Senator Munia Barnes, and Senator Shelley Cowell. These far-sided individuals understand what we are trying to do, and we appreciate that very much. So thank you very much again for listening to this testimony on behalf of our President, Regine Lee, and I hope that we can bring this forward to its conclusion.
Sidos masi, Mr. Perez. Mr. Swaveley, you're now recognized.
Thank you. Good morning.
Please turn on your microphone button. Thank you.
I'm Dan Swaveley from Tumon, testifying in favor of Bill 16038. This bill deserves a little history. Between 2015 and 2020, I served on GBB's Destination Development Committee under the chairmanships of Clifford Guzman and then Sam Shinahara. Common topics of concern were both abandoned buildings as well as poorly maintained properties and buildings within our H Resort Zone. Since we already had legislation to condemn and raise abandoned structures as Public Law 32157, I was asked to prepare a property maintenance code similar in effect as our building code to address unsightly properties and structures within the H Resort Zone only. That I did in detail, using the International Property Maintenance Model Code as a template. After review by the GBB management and Board of Directors, the Board approved an initiative in September 2020 to submit a draft bill covering the following aspects of property and structure maintenance. Sidewalks, walkways, stairs, driveways, and parking spaces must be well-maintained and free from unsafe conditions. Exterior premises must be free from grass, weeds, or plant growth other than trees, shrubs, cultivated flowers, and gardens in excess of six inches. Structures and property exteriors must be kept free from rodent, harborage, and pest Accessory structures, including fences and walls, must be well-maintained and in good repair. Exterior surfaces must be well-maintained and in good condition. Peeling, flaking, fading, and/or chipped paint in excess of 10% of any wall shall be repaired. Mold in excess of 10% 10% of any wall shall be repainted. Exterior walls should be free from holes, breaks, and loose or rotting materials. Exterior premises shall be free from any accumulation of rubbish or garbage. It shall be the responsibility of the owner to restore any defaced exterior surface of any structure. Notices of violation issued by the building official are to be corrected within a fixed period of time depending upon the nature of the repairs and maintenance. Failure to comply will result in suspension of the premises' business license. GBB also suggested a task force to vet and finalize my standards comprised of one each representative from GBB, Guam Mayor's Council, Fire Department, and Public Works, as well as two representatives from the tourism industry. That draft bill then stalled for several years in the Guam Building Code Council due to changes in officers, membership, and quorum issues. A few months ago, with the support of GBB, I briefed Senator Ada and his staff about that draft bill, and here we are today. Today's Bill 160-38 wisely removes all those detailed standards from law and places them into the regulatory process which can be amended more easily from time to time. Still, my initial standards, which customize the International Building Maintenance Model Code to Guam and its resort zone, will require a thorough review. Lastly, I make two assertions for your clarification. First, the code will apply to both properties and structures in the H Resort Zone, as we have both unmaintained structures as well as unmaintained vacant properties throughout that zone. Second, I recommend that the penalty for noncompliance be suspension of the property owner's business license, not simply a financial penalty. If a property owner cannot budget routine maintenance to repair, repaint, or mow the grass, it will not bother to pay a fine, especially while the revenue stream from its tenants continues. I hail the sponsors of Bill 160-38 and this committee's leadership in bringing this landmark legislation to the forefront of Guam's new face throughout our resort zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swaveley, for your testimony here today. I'm going to go ahead and open up the panel to my colleagues. And again, to keep within their five-minute for questions, I'll start off with the vice chair of the committee, Senator Duñez. Thank you, sir.
Seduce mase, Mr. Chair. Maybe just a few comments, actually. First of all, Mr. Perez, thank you for appearing on behalf of the president, Senator Lee, and also Mr. Swaveley. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. You know, I know that, we all know that the tourism sector is under a lot of strain and struggle since the advent of COVID and moving forward. Nonetheless, I think it's important, not just for the tourism industry, but for all of us, to really move. And I know that, you know, Vice President Perez, you've made this call out as well to all of us, you know, outside the government and private outside of Tumon. You know, we've got to continue to make every effort to change the face of how our roadsides, how our buildings, and how structures and parks and everything else look to really attract our tourism back. But of course, in H Zones, you know, we have to have these resorts, I believe, that are competitive, and the surrounding land areas that are competitive to our other destinations that we compete for. Many of us know, you know, if we go to our competing markets, whether it be in Asia or in the state of Hawaii or other places, you know, it's a stark difference in terms of management of properties and enforcement of regulations. So, it's timely. Like I said, many of us also, within the government, are culprits as well. However, I think that, you know, the privilege of that business district and everything else and in cooperation, you know, deserves this type of attention. You know, I think as well, although budget is very tight right now and things are difficult, you know, I think we can also partner. Once this legislation becomes law, there's got to be incentives and ways to help these businesses as well that are struggling and, you know, and with landowners as well, to see how we can make arrangements to ensure that there's opportunities. But you don't get there until you have a law that basically is strong and durable. And so, Mr. Chair, I thank you for inviting me to be a co-sponsor. While you stepped out to take a break for a moment, the testimony from GBB says to move this to 90 days, Mr. Chair, and I think that's appropriate, other than the one-year implementation. But I look forward to the rest of the discussion from my colleagues. Seduce mase, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duñez, for that. And we'll do that in the markup meeting for the amendment to move it to 90 days. Senator Gumitato, you're recognized, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dan, and thank you, Jerry, for being with us this morning. And I just want to be sure, again, for the record, according to the International Code Council, all but nine U.S. jurisdictions, Alaska, Hawaii, Indiana, Massachusetts, Montana, North Carolina, Oregon, Utah, and Vermont, have adopted some version of the International Property Management Code. And I think this seems like a very logical step even for us in 2025. I only have a, I wanted to kind of go to Dan's testimony. And I don't know if you can answer, Dan, or even Jerry, but, or maybe for the committee, but for the record, what is the status of the Guam Building Council? It was established in 21 GCA Section 67101.9 to safeguard life, health, and property, and to promote the public welfare. And really, what role will the council serve in the administrative adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code and associated fees, and with respect to ensuring regular monitoring of code compliance moving forward? I don't know, maybe, Dan, you can add some insight?
It was an important role of the Building Code Council, and it has been achieved on several occasions. But more recently, due to reasons what I don't totally understand, it's been inactive. And I tried. And I know everybody on it, they're friends, they're colleagues, right? I tried, but it's not functional right now. I'm not saying we should get rid of it. I'm just saying we should kick it, kick it into action.
No, I absolutely appreciate your honesty here. Only one other question, Mr. Chair. Since the enactment of Bill 151-36 in March of 2022 as Public Law 36-83, and maybe, I don't know if you guys can answer this, but to what extent is DPW partnered with GBB, GHRA, and other stakeholders to address derelict and potentially unsafe hotels and commercial structures, not just in Tumon, but across the island? And how effective has the now-three-year-old law supported or challenged any ongoing collaboration between government, property owners, and our visitor industry?
I can report this, that under the law that I cited, 32157, we did a photographic survey of buildings in the H Resort Zone, and did a write-up on all of them, and turned them over to Director Vince Ariola. And he was quick and effective in erasing three or four of them, as I recall. And the other three or four, as I recall, got the message and did something about it. So, that law, under our current director, really worked. And I'm sure he wouldn't hesitate to act on it again if we gave him credible information about, there are many such buildings in other zones. But I was with GBB at that time, and so I was concentrating on the H Resort Zone only.
All right, thank you, Dan. And, Mr. Chair, I think when we think about this particular issue, it's about changing culture of how we look at our structures and our property. I mean, all the work in the world that GBB could possibly do, but if folks don't really care and don't have any consideration for the impacts to the rest of this island community, I think it's an absolute shame. And I think we just got to pull that culture around. And this might be that big first step. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time today.
Thank you, Senator Gumitato, for your comments and questions. Senator Barnett, you're recognized, sir. Thank you.
Seduce mase, Mr. Chair, and good morning again. Thank you, Mr. Perez and Mr. Swaveley, for your testimony. Yeah, there's no doubt, when you drive through, I was just getting ice cream yesterday down Fujita Road. And, you know, these were two, I believe, one government property and the other side, both just absolutely overgrown. I was thinking the bill is overdue, but then, Mr. Swaveley, you had said that you had brought up concerns to DPW Director Ariola, and he had addressed these concerns. So, I was kind of just thinking in my mind if DPW already has this type of authority.
No, it does not, Senator. It has the authority to condemn and raise buildings, and then the cost of that is put as a lien onto the property. That's the way the law is written. That's the extent of DPW's authority at this time. And as I mentioned, Director Ariola used it effectively. This would be a whole other specter of authority.
Yeah. And I kind of wonder, because you mentioned suspension of the business licenses. And, you know, the two properties that I think of, and I think everybody thinks of when they maybe hear about this bill, is you have the Verona and you have the Pacific Star. So, do these two properties have active business licenses?
I don't know that. I doubt it. They're not doing any business, so there would be no need for them to have a business license. When you get into properties of that scale, I think we have to have a different set of tools. That goes well beyond, that goes well beyond to fix it up, mow the grass.
I mean, that's the real issue, though, right? I mean, we can give people a ticket because they don't bushcutter their parking lot, but it just doesn't seem fair when you go around the corner and you have, you know, a building like the Verona.
Right. It doesn't.
So, how do we address those types of issues, in your opinion?
This will not touch it. This will not touch those.
I was just going to say that actually, that's a bigger issue that involves a lot of legal processing and just need to run through the trap. And that was what Public Works did, actually. They just didn't go and destroy the buildings. They had to go through a process that is legally sufficient. And so, the same can be said probably for these two properties that you mentioned. I'm not sure what's happening now, but I understand that one of the properties has been sold. And so, it's just a matter of us trying to run down who these people are exactly and try to work with them initially, because I think they have plans to, you know, renovate the property. On the Verona side, I understand that there's, actually, I met the potential investors that have come about a month ago. And I just need to follow up and find out what's going on, because at some point, we need to do something, not just let it fester.
Sure. And I think if this bill passes, I mean, there's probably no limit to the amount of citations that those properties would receive under this code, which I can't seem to find. I'm hoping we could get a copy of that for the committee to review. But, Mr. Swaveley, I do want to ask, is there a difference between what we would be implementing with the International Property Maintenance Code and the bullet points that you included in your testimony?
The bullet points I mentioned are the structure of the International Property Maintenance Code. Behind those bullet points, I have nine pages of standards that should be met. I'm suggesting should be met. Those are the nine pages of standards that need to be vetted.
How many pages is the code?
Oh, the code isn't that long, but it's in a building code size, so I'm not sure if it's the number of words or not, yeah. But a law like this requires metrics by which to assess compliance, and those metrics have to be more or less specific. So, sooner or later, we have to come up with numbers. Is it 10% of mold on a wall or 15% of mold on a wall, at which time the violation is assessed, things like that. And that is why, after many discussions with GBB staff and board, we decided, we thought at that point, this was back over five years ago, that, yeah, there ought to be some cross-section of the community involved in helping Public Works come up with those standards, so that they're fair and they're reasonable. And most of all, they're Guam. They're Guam. The International Building Code has a lot of stuff in there that is not Guam. I think my nine pages is pretty much Guam.
Right. Yeah. So, the bill allows DPW to adopt part or the entirety of the code. So, are there things in the code that you think might not be applicable or logistically workable for Guam?
Well, there are references to matters of different climates and things like that, you know, like--
Got to shovel the snow out of your driveway.
Make sure the ice is scraped within, you know, three hours of a freeze or something like that. Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, I discarded all that, and I also kind of frankly liberalized a couple of the numbers, you know, instead of four inches of grass, I made it six inches, things like that. But again, it is always intended as a start, as a start for dialogue and deliberation to come up with something that everybody feels is, not everyone's going to agree with every standard, but everybody agrees, yeah, that's fair. Let's try it. And because it's in the regulatory process, which is a big improvement, it can be amended as needed, you know, as needed and if needed, yeah.
Mr. Perez, anything to add?
No, I totally agree with him.
Right on. Okay. So, was, has the board, the new board, looked at this bill?
Yeah, it generally has looked into this. This also is an outgrowth of the Tourism Recovery Committee that was instituted. And this helped accelerate, actually, what we've been trying to do for years, bringing some sense of urgency to the matter.
Was there input provided from the Hotel and Restaurant Association? Do you know if they have a stance on this?
Well, there are some representatives on the board that actually represent the industry, including hotels. And so, in principle, they're in favor of improving the, you know, the image of Tumon. I mean, look at it this way. Each of us have our own homes. If we invite people to our place, we want to fix up our place right before our guests arrive. And so, this is just an extension and an extrapolation in a broader scale as a community. And so, you know, to your point earlier about a longer-term cultural transformation, because it's just way too easy to just throw out stuff. But most places I've been to, one of the reasons it's kept clean is you look so out of place if you just kind of litter, because it's so well-kept. So, it can be an infectious effect, actually, if we put this into--
Yeah, it's embarrassing. I mean, we have a whole island-wide beautification task force, and you drive around the island. And, I mean, this is our home, but it's not looking so hot. And, you know, I kind of, in your testimony, or Senator Lee's testimony, she says, "We need to ensure that the physical environment matches the spirit of our people." And, you know, right now, unfortunately, in some ways it does, because, you know, our people are facing so many challenges. Our people need hope. We have a drug epidemic. And I think this is something that's long overdue. I just hope we can make it applicable in a way that's meaningful, so we don't end up, you know, just issuing fines to businesses that can't pay them or to businesses that don't have a business license. Then, I know I'm on the time, Mr. Chair, but I'd also like to see it applied more broadly to the commercial buildings, because, you know, here in Hagatnia, it's not just Tumon, right? And these tourists come to our island, and they don't just teleport to Tumon. They have to drive through every other village and see every other abandoned building or unsightly property. So, seduce mase, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. And you're absolutely right. Perhaps, you know, throughout the island, we need to continue to look at these things, and this is a good starting point. I mean, even with us here in Hagatnia, you know, the legislature is responsible for the Plaza de España. And over the past several months, we have continued to improve that area, improving the facilities, lighting up the monuments, and, you know, things of that nature. And we see more visitors coming down here. So, we got to ensure that not just Tumon, but throughout the island is also taken care of. So, a good starting point here. And, you know, we look forward to doing markups in the committee. Senator Taidiwi, ma'am, you're recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And off of the Jerry and Dan, and of course, GBB staff in the back, the supporting backbone of that agency, hard-working individuals, definitely know that for sure. Thank you so much for being here. I was hoping that DPW would also stick around, because a lot of it has to do with DPW. Did they provide a testimony, Mr. Chair, at all?
I'm not sure if they did, but we can always have them provide testimony, and we'll share that with the committee and ensure that you also get a part of that testimony. that with the committee and ensure that you also get a part of that testimony.
Yeah, I think it's very important to see if it's doable for them, and what other guidelines that they have to regarding abandoned vehicles, things like that, I mean, vehicles, abandoned buildings, we're so used to vehicles being on there, that's another eyesore, I mean, if anything, and I know that the chairman has been on top of that, too. Dan, in Saipan, do they have anything like this in Saipan, the IPMC?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because it's unfortunate, you know, last time I was in Saipan, you know, talk about abandoned buildings and, you know, just graffiti everywhere, it's just, it's really sad, and it's something that we don't want to, you know, be in a predicament like that. But at the same time, you know, I remember this whole program, you know, because we worked together at GVB on this particular issue here. And at the time, I think we were getting kickback from it because, you know, the cost associated, the overreaching, you know, trying to, you know, overregulate, or, you know, just resources, being, lacking resources, or individuals just don't have the money to update, especially if they have to, what's the word, close down their shop, and they just don't have any money, they're going into bankruptcy, there's so many legalities that DPW is probably going to come back and testify or provide testimony to the committee about how difficult it is. But, you know, I support, you know, something like this, because even though there's only two actually states that do it statewide, there's only about four other states that do it locally, not statewide, but within their jurisdiction. And it's working in some ways, but we have, because of the issues of, you know, there's safety issues involved here. There's structural integrity, fire, you know, that can be caused on this. But the good part about this is there's so many, so many more good things about it, you know. You have a happier neighbor, you know, next door to you, you know, and you reduce the liability for these businesses. So there's so many much more pros than there are cons to implementing this. But we have to do it cautiously, I think, and take in consideration the businesses that are Guam, on Guam, that are in dire need of assistance and continue to this day, you know, approaching us with regards to this. Really, I had a lot of questions for DPW. However, in your testimony, Dan, you did not mention to make this 90 days, from one year to 90 days. And you know, working with DPW and being a part of these committees at GVB and working with the regulatory agencies, you know how difficult it is for them to get up and move. Do you really think that 90 days is sufficient enough, knowing you've worked at DPW many years? Or, I mean, let's be realistic about this, too. You know, I mean, it's nice to reach for the, reach for as much as you can, but...
Honestly, Senator, after chasing this for seven or eight years, I was happy with one year delay before it started. Seems like a big improvement, right? Speed of light. It is doable in 90 days, but we have to get the heads together.
Yeah, our sense of urgency is more than a year. I mean, less than a year.
Just get together and make it, it can be done. I mean, you know, I do consulting work, right? I don't get a year to do something. I get 90 days to do it, right? You sit down, you pull your people together, and you'll make it happen. 90 days is doable, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, go, I'll ask Vince to bring you onboard as pro bono to go and help assist DPW.
Says I'll be pro bono.
Yeah, I know, it has been. It has been for you. So then you'll continue your pro bono, you know?
Happy to, thank you.
Continue to provide that free service to DPW, because God knows, they need it. I mean, they are losing people left and right, and people, engineers are retiring big time, and there's nobody standing in line taking their jobs. So, you know, if there is any delay, it's because of employment, you know, that they're losing a lot of people. The baby boomers are all retiring, you know, and the majority of them are, were engineers over there at DPW. So you may have to, you know, keep that promise and said you're willing to work with them. But, so, that again, Mr. Chair, is the reason why, you know, I was hoping DPW was here, so we can get a clear understanding on the timeline. But I appreciate the, this legislation, Mr. Chair, that you introduced. I know it is been a long time coming, I mean, we have to do something. Destination management was an area that I oversaw at GVB, and I understand the most important thing that we can do is have our visitors come here and talk highly about our island, because now we're in a phase of social media, more than any kind of other marketing there is out there. Social media is number one, and when they take pictures out there, they want to take pictures of beautiful locations and areas and buildings and murals that we've been putting up. I mean, that gets out on social media, everybody's going to want to come to Guam. And we just don't want those pictures to look like we're in a, you know, in the slum dogs, you know, or any kind of areas like that. So I appreciate the time. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate this legislation as well.
Thank you, Senator Taidue, and I think, you know, you brought up a good point, right? These are hard times for a lot of businesses, but, you know, a lot of times, we have to hold landlords accountable for the buildings that they do rent out to these small businesses, because if you have a store in a big commercial building that the landlord is not upkeeping naturally, people are not going to want to come in, because they don't, if the outside looks like this, they're scared to see what the inside would look like as well. So, you know, it's a good start again, that we continue to work in improving our visitor destination, and starting out in Tumon is one thing, and perhaps throughout the island is what we also need to look at expanding to. But I'd like to thank Vice President Perez for your testimony on behalf of President Lee, and Mr. Swaveley for your testimony as well, and we'll look forward to getting the markup, and the committee will reach out again to DPW to get their input, and perhaps will also send a copy of those testimonies to Senator Taidue as well, so they should be able to look at their comments on the date of, you know, whether one year or 90 days is doable as well. But I thank you all for being here this afternoon. There'll be no further questions or comments on today's public hearing. Bill 160-38 is publicly heard. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within seven days, which may be mailed to my office on the second floor of the Guam Congress Building at 163 Chalanc Santo Papa in Hagatna. You may also send your statements to us at Vice Speaker Tony Ada at GuamLegislature.gov. Thank you all for your participation today. This public hearing is adjourned, and the time is now 9:47 a.m. Thank you, and have a blessed day.